Us to be in a country that we can gather and make decisions. We ask your guidance over the board in their decision making. And we ask your protection on all those that are here and in their travels today. We ask this in your name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pat. Angela, would you mind giving the page?
Ladies, to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have several addendums. The Chair of Work requests adding to the agenda. I think y'all all have a copy, but I'll do the quick list of them. First addendum would be waiver of rental fees for good deed in the center. Authorizing purchase of heavy equipment for Sand Beach. And approving the claim socket. And approving sponsorship for Oral Keef Museum. Also would like to add to the agenda the recognition Kevin Coggins from CTA to discuss a parking garage with the Board.
Motion.
Here, second.
Second.
All in favor, second by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. There's also a request to add Matt from the Coliseum Commission to move up. He has some business, so under public forum, we'll move that item up for you, Matt.
Thank you.
First item, well, let's get Matt first. Matt, recognize you.
Thank you. Happy Mardi Gras to y'all.
By the way, I think we're moving forty-six up, so this goes to forty.
Forty-six, item forty-six. Thank y'all again for what y'all do for the Coliseum. I think item forty-six just allows y'all to do it legally. And for that, the Commission and our staff really do appreciate it. Tim Smith came out about three weeks ago. We had a fire, a main water line that feeds our fire suppression fail underneath the main driveway coming into the Coliseum. That was three days before a major concert and two hockey games. And Tim was able to get it done in one day. We did have to hire an outside company because the magnitude of the break was such that it was beyond Tim's capabilities. But the dig and then filling the hole back up and making sure we were clean and ready for two hockey games and the rock band tool, you can't get that kind of service even if you pay three times the amount it's worth. So I can't say thank y'all enough. Tim is sending me a bill, so we keep everything above board. And those are the things that make our relationship with y'all very special, and it's very much appreciated.
Okay. Thank you, Matt. Chair now will entertain a motion approving MOU with the Coliseum Commission.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, here, non, all in favor, second by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Now, recognize Stacy Riley, Heather Wagner, and Harry Yost of Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence speak about the need for developing a family justice center. Good morning.
Good morning.
Just a bracket, each one of you, if you want to address board, just give us your name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Stacy Riley. Work address or home address?
Works.
Working, working address.
Okay, two thirteen Porter Avenue, Biloxi.
I'm Heather Wagner with the Wagner Group, sixty-six sixteen North Washington Avenue, Ocean Springs.
Sarah Jones standing in for Harry Yost, two one three Porter Avenue, Biloxi, Mississippi.
Harry was supposed to come here, but he had a court emergency hearing this morning. So our chief advocacy officer is Sarah Jones. Thank you for letting me come in and speak about the project that we're working on with the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence. I know I've met with a few of you to kind of go over this, and I've been here to speak with you about it already in the past. We have been proposing to create a program of the center that will be a collaboration of service providers, law enforcement, and court professionals as a family justice center model. And this model, as I've mentioned before, will be a one-stop shop. It will be a place that victims of interpersonal violence, domestic violence, sexual assault, human trafficking, and family members of homicide victims can come to to get immediate services. So the services will be available not only by our agency, but also we'll have law enforcement in the facility once this comes to fruition, and we'll have other service providers. So it's not just us. They would see, they can see CPS, they can see other agencies. And then we also have a strong need for expansion of our children's program services. Because one thing we know is children that are affected by domestic violence and childhood sexual abuse are definitely in need of comprehensive services. So what I'm coming to you to talk to you about and ask about today is a consideration for use of any of the county properties that may be conducive to what we want to put together. Because the space that we have, you know, we bought a facility here in Biloxi to be able to be a portion of our one-stop shop. But after our planning has gone into place with our partners and the Alliance for Hope International to help us create this project, we're realizing that that facility, which is sixty-five hundred square feet, is not near as big enough what we needed because we need it to be able to house, you know, pie in the sky thing, house as many of our service providers as possible. So give it a little bit of short recap of what happened. Last week, we, as a collaboration, met to do our strategic plan for the project for the Family Justice Center. And this was ran by the Alliance for Hope International, which is the one who created the project of the Family Justice Center. And there are hundreds of these across the country. This will be the first one in the state of Mississippi. And we want to make sure that we can make this a successful venture and to replicate the project in our other five service areas. So we would create one in Harrison County that would serve the entire six county service area on the coast, but also in part of that project will be able to replicate a satellite agency in the other counties to be able to provide the same need for those individuals. Because every county, their services, their resources are different. So we want to make sure we can do something like that, but we need support. So there were over a hundred plus people that came together last week. These are people from all walks of life. We have business owners, we have service providers, we have law enforcement, we had court professionals, the district attorney's offices there to make this, to see what we can do to make this happen. So I'll give you a little bit of information. If we can get this project in place, of course, we would, you know, dream big and start small. We don't want to like all move into a place together immediately. But we're talking about having people in this facility will not only be the Center for Nonviolence, but we'd have law enforcement professionals attached to this project, court professionals attached to the project. We would have other agencies. We're talking Mental Health Association, Backing Mission, CPS, DHS, a childcare facility. We're looking at the possibility of moving our therapeutic preschool program into a facility that will be able to move it away from the shelter program and keep the shelter as secure as possible. We would have faiths attached to it, faith-based agencies, child protective services, area agency on aging. And this is just a few of those projects. So what I'm coming to you for is to ask for your support in this project, but also to see what, if there's any properties or anything that can be earmarked by the county to assist us with making this project come to realization and to help us to best serve the people in our communities who have been affected by interpersonal violence. And I wanted to hand it over real quick, like to Heather, to talk a little bit about more what she brings to the table with this.
Hi, thank you. My name is Heather Wagner. Former career, I was with the Attorney General's Office as the Director of the Domestic Violence Division. I did that for about twenty years. I now have a relationship with the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence as a consultant, and I am working with them to develop fundraising, develop mechanisms by which they can deliver their services more thoroughly and more efficiently throughout the coastal region that they serve. That is kind of one of the keys of a family justice center. It is seen as the gold standard for providing services for victims of interpersonal violence throughout the country. As Stacy mentioned, we don't have one in Mississippi yet. It's been my dream since I was with the Attorney General's Office that we would be able to develop such a thing here in Mississippi. And the efficient part of it is that all these agencies come together to provide services in a common place without having a myriad of different offices, without having a myriad of different transportation mechanisms. That is one of the things that is often lacking in victim services. We have all the services. We just need to be able to utilize them more efficiently and more effectively. Survivors of violence who don't have a safety net, who don't have easy accessibility to services oftentimes fall out of the system for a number of reasons. Frustration, feeling alone, fear of the system. They don't know who to reach out to. This will help resolve that problem. And it won't just benefit, although it will greatly benefit these survivors, it will also benefit the communities as a whole. We've seen that despite all of our efforts, domestic violence incidents are not declining. They are continuing to occur, including domestic violence homicides. Having a center such as this where law enforcement and courts and the services all work together integrally will help address those crime issues and those homicide issues. During the strategic planning last week, they mentioned that domestic violence homicides have greatly, in Fort Worth, Texas, domestic violence homicides have greatly reduced. I think they had one in the past year, which is wonderful. So it's more than simply serving the survivors. It's helping benefit our communities as a whole. And as I said, it is the gold standard. Wanted to make sure there wasn't anything else I wanted to say. But no, it's just really, it's been a dream of mine. It's so exciting to see this come to fruition. Some of you may know my history, some of you may not. My mother was Jane Philo, who was the Director of the Gulf Coast Center for Violence, Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence, although it was the Women's Center then, for twenty-three years. So this is a passion of mine, and it's very exciting to see the Gulf Coast Center for Nonviolence under Stacy's leadership really become a forerunner in the state and in the southeast in efforts of this. And so we really do appreciate all of your ongoing and past support. But as we move forward and grow this into a new project that can better serve our communities, we definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there a grant attached to this? Let's talk about the money.
So our agency is funded by more than thirty grants, and that keeps all of our programs running. It keeps our process, keeps our staff available, and keeps us, it allows us to have a comprehensive approach to services. We have grants to run both of our shelter programs, counseling, case management, our children's program, our advocacy program, and our civil legal clinic. And the other agencies within the, would be collaborators of this whole project, they have their own funding as well. And then what we will be able to do as a collaboration is apply for funding together because that's what funders want you to do. They want to see people, the agencies that work together to maximize resources and be able to provide a comprehensive approach to services and not try to, you know, everybody trying to fight for the same amount of money. Also, too, is, you know, we're all paying for operating expenses, you know, for our public buildings and our spaces. We all pay rent, we all pay this and that and the other to manage our services. And if we could, you know, remove the amount of rent that we, as a collaboration of other agencies, are providing, that we're able to significantly increase the funding that we have that can go towards our services. Now, those of you know that, you know, this collaborative model and this one-stop shop shop model is something that is also being sought out there with mental health because, again, it makes sense. And I know that the youth court is looking at services that are able to be centralized. And this is an opportunity for us to continue to partner and make this a, it makes us a facility that we all can come to. We can say that we, as a community on the Gulf Coast in Mississippi, have made strides to make sure that we can provide a safe place. We can eliminate domestic violence homicides, and we can significantly decrease the number of domestic violence calls that people are going on in our law enforcement agencies. And we also can address the number of sexual assaults that occur in our community as well as to increase the number of sexual assault cases that actually make it to court. Again, we know this happens because survivors in a family justice center feel supported, they feel valued, and they want to make sure they can get everything they can from this project.
So Ms. Riley, if I understand what you're saying before us is a request to look and see if we have any facilities that you could, would be appropriate for you to use?
Right. Yeah, the county has, I know the county has some facility, I'm not sure about all those. And I have, I have had the privilege to tour the old youth court building. I know some agencies are already there, which would be a perfect spot, too, because, again, it's a collaboration model as well as the children's shelter. The children's shelter.
On apples. And then Building C, CASA has moved out of. They have a courtroom in there, you could do mock, you know, to prepare people.
Oh, you? I'm sorry.
There's those, well, there's those two buildings that are on the same campus with the advocacy center right in the middle, which is kind of the same efforts.
Right.
I think that would be, would that work for you, those two buildings?
Absolutely. We ran a walkthrough. We toured the facility a couple of years ago before we started this project, then again fairly recently to kind of see what it looked like. And it would be perfect because it is that campus model of route, it's accessible by the bus line. It's in Gulfport, which is the largest city in the county. Convenient to other agencies to cohabitate in. And also, too, the, you know, for pie in the sky type of approach to this is we want to be the biggest, best program we possibly can have. And there's space there that we may be able to build onto and create more space and more opportunities for programs to move into it.
I'd suggest that we take it under advisement and see, you know, what facilities are available and maybe contact you then, go from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, under public forum, I'd like to recognize Mr. Coggins from CTA to discuss potential.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm here today to talk about a proposed new intermodal facility on the campus of Memorial Hospital Gulfport. There's two needs for this project. Coast Transit Authority needs a hub on the western edge of our service area to support expansion westward into Long Beach, past Chris Chan, face St. Louis, Wavlin. The hospital, and I know you've all been there, the parking is awful. I was over there the other day, and there was a train of cars going all the way up to the top of the garage and all the way back down, and there wasn't a single parking spot. And I'm personally aware of somebody who went there for a medical appointment to get a test. They couldn't find a parking spot and just went home without getting their medical care. I spent about thirty minutes talking to one of the nurses, a lady who's a supervisor in one of their ICU. She's worked there for nine years. And those people doing their shift change at night, parking in that surface parking lot is a really security risk. They're very concerned about it. So it's, they're just, they can't grow anymore, and they can't really meet their current mission with the parking they have. And so we're partnering with them, and Coast Transit Authority is going to apply for a raised grant, and the deadline is February twenty-eighth. This project's probably going to be about twenty million dollars, all told, the different aspects of it. It's gonna, you know, they've got three point nine acres north of the main building now. It's got about three hundred and eighty spots on it. They're going to provide the property. We would build the building, we would own the building. And then it would be a cooperative operating agreement between us and the hospital. It's, would be a, we totally rebuild that property, and I could send you all, you know, later on, I've got the latest renderings. I'll send it to your offices so you can see exactly what the latest rendering is.
And this is going to be a rate?
Yes, sir. It's four-story, five hundred cars. We're gonna, we're gonna increase parking on that lot, three hundred, three hundred more cars. And so that's also gonna take them into the future so they can continue to build their service. And it's gonna give us a new hub for expansion of services to the west, which we need to do. We've been talking with USM off and on for several years now, and, you know, there's a new focus on their campus. And so it's a real good partnership. The hospital is going to provide the property for the new facility. We would build it, own it. They would pay the local match. We're not asking Harrison County Board of Supervisors for any money. We're just asking you to sign on as the owner of the facility. The partnership, the memoranding of understanding you have before you today is just formalizing that agreement and what's gonna go on there. Coast Transit Authority will sign a formal agreement directly with the hospital on the particulars between us and them. They're gonna own the property, we're gonna build it. They're gonna provide the local match. So it's win-win-win for everybody. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I kind of went over it fairly quickly.
Definitely a need, but.
So basically, my understanding, there's no financial obligation from us at all.
That's correct.
It's just with us and y'all, Memorial and Gulfport all signing on to this MOU. It shows UST and strength and the chances of us actually getting this grant better. And you said that twenty, this isn't on the agenda today, but we do have the MOU and an email. You said that this application has to be submitted by the twenty-eighth.
Right.
So we have to vote on this prior to that, for this application.
Yes, this needs to be included in the application.
We have that, and I'll make a motion to add that to the agenda, and so vote on that today.
The motion is second to add the MOU to the agenda. Any discussion? Here, non, all in favor, second by aye.
Aye.
Go opposed by no, the motion carries. Now, would you like to make a motion to approve the MOU?
I'll make a motion to approve the second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Only discussion I have is absolute need for, given, I guarantee. We've all, I've experienced that going up and down and then having an appointment and worrying about having, leaving the.
I've talked to Kent a couple of years now for looking for this opportunity, the proper grant opportunity, and this is it. And so there's one point one billion dollars this year, next year, and the next year through USDOT. If we don't get it this year, you know, I think we would get it next year. And I really like the application, you know, we write these applications all the time. Gulf Regional Planning Commission is partnering with us on the application and they're helping us write the application. And the more I look at the positive outcome of this, how many people it's going to help, the more I like it.
And you said it's a three hundred, right? Three hundred space.
It's gonna increase three hundred cars on that one lot.
On that one.
Yes, sir.
Good. Gotcha. Any further discussion? Here, non, all in favor, second by aye. Aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
All right. I believe that's it. Discuss relocation of the youth court detention facility from Esther Street Boulevard in Biloxi to Seaway Road in Gulfport and issue RFP for engineer and architect. Tim from that, the lead. All right, this is simply a discussion.
Good morning.
Okay. Good morning.
We've got a handout for you guys. It's just a one-page list of bullet points, which I tried to answer basically three questions. I'll wait till you guys get it right. Okay, so the first question that I wanted to try to answer is who all would be relocated with respect to youth. But we have eleven different functions of youth court that's spread out across the county. And I want to also mention, I have begun putting together a PowerPoint presentation with videos and photos and maps and data and all the rest of it. And if the board would be willing to entertain it, I would love to come back and be able to present that to you guys so you can see it. The idea is very similar to what Stacy Riley was talking about. We, I believe, need to create a one-stop shop for all things juvenile-related. Right now, we have eight, like I said, eight different buildings. Harrison County Youth Court and DYS are housed in one building. The Juvenile Detention Center is housed in a different building. Our Family Intervention Court staff is housed in a different building. Juvenile Intervention and Resource and Assessment Center, a different building. We have Visitation and Resource Center that is out by the old youth court. You guys know where that is. CASA is now housed at the night nonprofit, and we regularly transport inmates to and from the adult detention facility. Our parents who are incarcerated, we transport them back and forth from Biloxi to Seaway Road. And then finally, we have, of course, the abuse neglect side of things, and we deal with CPS on a daily basis. So as to who would be relocated, it would be all of those eight different buildings into a one-stop shop. Our proposed location.
That includes the detention as well?
Includes the detention as well. Our proposed location, we did a little bit of research. They're right between the Harrison County Adult Detention Facility and CPS. There is an eight point one acre piece of property. And like I said, I've got this in a presentation, show you the maps, it's already owned by the county. And our proposal is to pick up everything in those eight different locations and drop them right between the Harrison County Adult Detention Facility and the CPS office out on Seaway Road. It's centrally located or more centrally located than we currently are. The third question that I wanted to try to answer today is why do we need to move to a more centrally located area in the county? As I said earlier, we regularly transport inmates to and from the youth court for hearings. Like I said, the parents are incarcerated. The second reason that I've got listed, the population, you see this in the presentation, I don't have that today, obviously. But the population that we serve, sixty, more than sixty-four percent of the people that we serve are west of Cowan Road. And that's pulling from data from our MyKids system, which is the system that youth courts use in Mississippi. The third reason, and probably one of the most important reasons, is the current condition of the juvenile detention facility. In July of twenty twenty-two, we had some sewage backups. I've got some videos and some photos of that. We currently have an extensive amount of roof repairs that are needed and floor repairs that are needed. I've got photos of that. At one time, I think my previous county administrator estimated the cost of that project to be roughly two hundred thousand dollars. The detention facility that we currently use for juveniles was built in the nineteen sixties, so it's sixty years old. There is no covered walkway between the two buildings, so when the children have to come from detention over youth court, they break the elements. I've got grand jury reports dating back to March of twenty twelve, and in almost every single one of them, they mention the need for a new juvenile detention facility. Due to COVID, I don't have any between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-two because of COVID. We have some DPS inspection reports we can provide to you. The fourth reason, at this new facility, is this is something that's related, you know, federal law changed recently. And now when you house juveniles that are charged as adults, you have to house them out of sight and sound of adult inmates. And they have to be handled by personnel who are trained to handle juveniles. What I'm proposing with this, and I've kind of put this on the table with law enforcement and our district attorney and some of the other judges, what I'm proposing is if and when we do this, let's do this in a fashion where we're not worried about having to violate federal law. Let's add a wing to the detention, the juvenile detention center where we can house these juveniles who are charged as adults. I think right now, Sheriff Haley can correct me if I'm wrong, there's somewhere in the neighborhood of twenty to twenty-five minors who are in the adult detention facility charged as adults. That, I think, is a big plus if we do this. Fifth reason, the population that we serve, a very high percentage of this population, they had transportation issues. And like I said, if we're serving sixty-four percent of who we serve is west of Cowan, it creates a problem getting them down to southeast corner of this county in Biloxi. We do have some one good thing about COVID. We started off with, soon as COVID hit, we went to virtual hearings, we continued that, so it does help. But it's still, we still serve that population who has transportation issues. Sixth reason, the train tracks go right by the current youth court, and multiple times a day we are interrupted in court, the building is not soundproofed, the courtroom is not soundproofed. We have to stop the hearing or the trial and wait until that train goes by. And like I said, it's not soundproofed. There is actually a case out there that discusses the need for the board to provide a courtroom free of distractions, so to speak. And I've added that to this. It'll be in that presentation if y'all let me come back and present this. Seventh reason, the current building that we have, a last board meeting, we had on the agenda a request for a budget amendment to add a second prosecutor, so we have one for delinquency and one for abuse neglect. We are running out of office space. Every one of those offices is filled at the current moment except for one, and that is designated for DYS. They have a certain number of pens, so we can't fill that. That's a DYS-designated office. We also have storage space issues. The eighth reason that we put this on the table today, in twenty seventeen, this board actually approved sending out a request for qualifications in relation to the building of a new detention, juvenile detention facility. And I believe there were, yeah, ten different firms responded with portfolios. One of those firms was Machado Patano here locally, and believe it or not, they actually designed a facility in Calcasieu Parish, Louisiana, which is a JDAI model site detention facility. JDAI is Juvenile Detention Alternatives Initiative. It is a really, really great facility. I've got that portfolio, I've added it to this presentation. I actually went out to Calcasieu Parish and toured the facility, and it's a phenomenal facility. And I've got a video rendering, I believe, I've emailed that to the board, but we can certainly add it to this presentation and let y'all see that when I come back. And then the final reason is, you know, we've batted this around with a lot of folks and a lot of community support for this. I attached the letter that Crosby Parker sent in, our district attorney, wherein he indicates his approval or his desire to also create a one-stop shop for all things related to juvenile. So with that, if y'all would be willing to let me come back and present this in PowerPoint presentation, I'm gonna make a screen, but I would be delighted to do that for you guys.
Yeah, I don't think. Yeah, I don't think we're. What object, no, no, presentation. Just out of curiosity, uh, Judge, do you, do you have any idea roughly what the cost would be of what you're requesting if we do a cover, uh, one, one-stop facility for you? I use the word one-stop.
No idea, I can tell you that Calcasie Parish value, remember, I think it was 50, there you are, 59, you remember?
Fifty-something or square footage ones?
Not the, uh.
Costs.
Costs. So the facility was like 59,000 square feet. And I don't remember the cost of it, it's in that proposal, um, but I'll add it to this presentation. But what, what we are proposing is to do something similar to what Calcasie Parish did, but with some added pieces. Because they did not, what they did is they created a juvenile justice center. And so that's related to delinquency only. And we would, of course, have to take care of CPS and CASA and all the rest of it. So I don't know what it would cost, but I would assume the request for qualifications would include some kind of idea.
If I know when you're ready to come back.
And what kind of square footage you want?
Okay.
Cause 59,000 square feet is bigger than this building. I mean, that, that would be, you know, just to give you a comparison, it'd be really big.
We do have the blueprints from that, so, um, you know, we'll, we'll add that to the presentation. Anything, any, anything else you guys have questions about or want me to try to include in this presentation, please don't hesitate to reach out to Val and let us know.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Order concurring with the resolution of Harris County Development Commission authorizing and approving the sale of approximately 6.6 and a half acres of real property located in Long Beach Industrial Park. Identified as tax parcel number 0511M-001-005.000 to Smell LLC for the purpose of constructing and operating a facility for the sales and our manufacturing of building materials. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Do I hear a second? Second discussion? Any discussion? Anybody?
Smell LLC is otherwise known as Suncoast Building Materials, which is across the street. I don't know why they picked that LLC name, but that's up to them.
That could cause concern.
Right. Not a good name.
Anyway. Any, any discussion? You're none, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Thank you, Bill.
Thank y'all.
The next item is consent agenda items four through 10, generally no, uh, uh, conditions, uh, controversial matter. Do I hear a motion?
Motion, second.
All, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the tax assessor order spreading on, upon the minutes, personnel changes of the tax assessors office, listed with payroll clerk and personnel department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of and approving petitions for the decrease to the 2023 real and personal property levels as recommended by the tax assessor.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Codeit menstruation. Authorizing the board president to execute, uh, the community rating system recertification.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. County engineer, order approving execution and payment of pay application, number filed to Harrison County Bridge. For work done on the Manj Avenue I-10 project according, uh, in accordance with the development agreement and the attached form of DO requisition in the amount of, uh, 746,000, 764.21, payable from 309100-581.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion? The only discussion that I have, uh, we have a new controller, we might want to add up the, the total we've paid. Because the contract for the bridge is about two, 3 million, if I'm not mistaken, or close to it, more than 15 million we've committed. So we need a, we need a total amount, make sure we don't go prove over that 15 million that we've committed because the cost of the bridge is more. Now, because then, uh, Buckings will be picking up the difference.
They don't.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. If we have a vote.
Do I hear a motion, second?
Uh, and all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Emergency management, order authorizing 50% deposit in an amount of 200,000.
2,000.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Some zeros off of that.
Too many counting, too many zeros. 50% of the deposit in the amount of 2,000 after attached stating for the low quote purchase of countertops approved by the board is on January 12th, 24th. And be paid from 001-260-641.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of and approving the annual progress report of hazard mitigation and flood plain management for the year 2023 as submitted by EMA Director Matt Stratt.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving the second reading and adopting a resolution approving the 2024 Mississippi Emergency Agency District Nine Regional Hazard Litigation Plan as recommended by Matt Stratt, EMA Director.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order spreading, uh, on the mess, the personnel changes of the senior resource agency listed and on file payroll clerk and personnel, uh, department.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Zoning at menstruation.
Yes, sir. Zoning recommends concurrent with planning commission recommendation for cases 19 through 21. And just a reminder, we have a 1030 and a 1045.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the cases?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. We'll move on till we reach 1030. Do they hear?
Please.
Order accepting the Lewis and Best bid received for construction of the Harrison County Fire Station on the 15 at traditions. From Starks Contracting Company, an amount of 3 million, 390,000 as recommended by William Associates and Pat Sullivan, the fire chief.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Recognize the sheriff's deputy reports on persons incarcerated in jail.
778 total inmates, 88 misdemeanors, 225 state, 21 federal, and 27 of those being juvenile.
Thanks, Sheriff. Any questions from the sheriff? We'll move on with the agenda. Order spreading upon the minutes, personnel changes of the sheriff's.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of the inmate bill, all from the Harrison County Adult Detention Center for the month of January 2024 and on file with county administrator per statute 19 days, 2574.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving digital marketing services with high boot, I guess that's how you say that, huh? High boot for the sheriff's office with an additional deposit of 2,359, payable from 001-200-581 for a term of six months. And authorizing the board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order retiring asset, uh, number 27560-K9, K9 named Maverick for health reasons and authorizing inventory clerk to remove same from the inventory. He will be adopted by his previous owner or handler, I'm sorry, not on the handler.
Second.
Any, any discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing disposal of inactive records as listed, uh, which are eligible for disposal, uh, in accordance with the retention schedule. Previously approved by local government records committee and adopted by the board supervisors.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving sole source purchase from LEFTA Systems, an amount of 5,500 for an annual software subscription. For a field training officer training program for the patrol and corrections division. Payable from 001-200-581.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order accepting the only bid received for inmate medical, mental, dental, and pharmacy services at the Harrison County Adult Detention and Juvenile Detention Center from Vital Core. To, uh, to begin at issuance for a term of two years with the option to renew and authorizing board president sign contract upon receipt.
Motion.
Sheriff, second, second. Do I hear a second? Sheriff.
Oh, Dr. Lander, I was just going to say that, um, they requested that we do it for two years because it increases, they have to buy insurance. And if you do a one-year versus a two-year, it's for a 40% difference. So, um, uh, we're still going to write it up to where y'all have the ability to cancel the contract after a year, but the contract's going to be two years. If that makes sense.
Okay.
Any fur, any further discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. On the county administrator, order approving malice reimbursement for travel.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. 34, author, authorize, uh, order authorizing reimbursement to the road fund, 150-000-36 for the file, uh, as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto, auto authorizing reimbursement of 583.67 cents, sheriff's office account, 001-200-542 for vehicle repairs for fire services vehicle. Payable from 106, 250, 542.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing disposal of assets per attached list and authorizing inventory clerk to remove the same.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving payment of claims listed payable from Thor account.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order authorizing a line item transfer of $30,000 from 001-168-543 to 001-168-926. To purchase DA office furniture.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of and spreading upon the minutes, following rental contract to fairgrounds.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order removing Madeline Quavis from the list of persistent proceedings, third, and adding Sheila Marsh, board of supervisors, uh, secretary, and approving bonding of same.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving 24, 25, insurance renewal documents and invoices as listed.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order to approving travel as listed.
Motion.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving payment of the following claims.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order acknowledging receipt of land redemption settlement report for the month of January 24th. For first and second judicial districts submitted by magistrate clerk Angela Thrash, as per code 1972 and stated section 27-45-1.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving contract agreement with key impact strategies discussed Harrison County on issues pertaining to the mission of the Mississippi Sound Coalition beginning March 1st, 24th, and ending February 28th, 25th, at a rate of $10,000 per month plus reasonable expenses. And authorizing the board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? The only discussion I have is that Harrison County will determine what is reasonable expenses. That is, that'll be up to, that'll be up to the county administrator and the board supervisor. Any, any further discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. 46, we've done, 47, order rescinding agenda item eight, file ID 24-2396, adopted on January 2nd, 24th, proving the employment of Troy Peterson as county administrator.
Motion.
Do I hear a second? Discussion? All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order rescinding I, I, agenda item 51, file ID 24-2477, adopted on January 8th, 24th. Proving the contract for Troy Joseph Peterson as county administrator effective January 2nd, 24th, to be paid as per contract, payable and equal by monthly payments and authorizing board president to execute the same.
Motion.
Second.
Third.
Discuss.
Third.
Found out that's a good movement and Joseph.
I just circled it.
Yeah. All in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order approving Troy Joseph Peterson, South Mississippi Land and Development District as county administrator, effective January 8th, 2024.
Motion.
Second. Discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Order adjudicating the employment of Tim C. Holloman, Boris Holloman and Associates to represent Justin Wessel in his official capacity as the clerk and registrar of the circuit court of Harrison County. And Tony, Joe, Dyes, Becky Payne, Barbara Kimble, Christine Bryce, and Carolyn Handler. In their official capacities, capacities as members of the Harrison County Election Commission in a matter of the Republican National Committee, Ed Al versus Justin Wessel. Ed Al, United States District Court, Southern District of Mississippi. Calls number 124CV25LGRPM.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion? Anybody need me to read that again?
Do it a little faster this time.
All right. Any, you had any discussion?
No, I'm not sorry.
It's Stephen.
Okay.
Um, Dr. Lathan? I apologize for interrupting, but, um, he was served with the libertarian, there's another lawsuit, I don't know if you want us to go ahead and add it today.
Yeah, there was another one, and it was something about the voting, absentee voting.
It's the Libertarian Party, is that correct?
That's correct.
So I don't know if you want to go ahead and just add that and redo that order rather than waiting.
We can do that, do we need the minutes to reflect what it is? Can you state basically what it is?
It's the second lawsuit that he was served with, it was late Thursday or Friday morning, that was the Libertarian National Party. It's filed a similar suit, making allegations of.
Same court?
Uh, it's the same court, it's a different calls number, but I'll go back and add that, but rather than waiting.
Yeah.
Just add it.
Add those, that information as soon as we get.
Do you want to add that to this? Get a motion to approve?
Yeah. Both of them called.
Yeah.
Justin, thank you.
Justin, so this is like a blanket lawsuit then, right? This isn't targeting us specifically.
Right, from what I've heard, they're filing the same suit in 22 or 24 different states. Essentially what it is, is in COVID, during COVID in 2020, the Secretary of State and Legislature pushed through this five days, additional days from absentee voting. That we have to accept absentee ballots that are mailed and accepted as long as they're postmarked on or before the date of the election. These parties are stating that, that violates federal law.
They should be received then before.
Yeah, they're, they don't.
That's what they claim.
Yeah, they're saying that the five days violates federal law and it should go back to 7:00 PM, election day is the deadline and that's it, so.
Okay. Thank you. We're approving both those, uh, uh, cases. Any further discussion? You're not all in favor, signify by aye. Those by no, motion carries. Auto adjudicating the tax sales of. Those by no, motion carries, auto adjudicating the tax sales of August twenty-nine, twenty-two, and August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three on tax parcel number zero eight zero nine D dash zero three dash zero one one dash three, uh, three, uh, zero 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 for twenty-one and twenty-two taxes due to erroneous sale void ab initio and for related purposes.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
This was a third-party lease on sixteen section land that was terminated, and thus the property reverted back to the school district, which is an exempt entity, so it should be settled out.
Thank you. Any further discussion, you're none, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries, auto adjudicating tax sales of August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three on tax parcel number one 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 zero J dash zero two dash zero two one dot zero 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 for twenty-two taxes erroneous and thus void ab initio and for related purposes. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion?
This parcel, it's down by the Coliseum, and it was, um, the city of Belusse fought a portion of it in twenty twenty-one, but the judgment wasn't filed until twenty twenty-three, so that missed the taxes assessment up, so it was an erroneous assessment, so it qualifies.
Gotcha. In further discussion, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving the city of Belusse's request to reallocate Opera funding to the, to assist with the construction of the city's Tanglewood sewer replacement project.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries, order accepting the resignation of Jenna Bass, a beautification commission, uh, commissioner representing supervisor district three.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, you're none, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries, order approving installation of streetlights, as listed.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, you're none, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries. All right, let's get some of the agains. Consider approving waiver of rental fees for the use of Good Deeds Community Center by the epsilon chi omega chapter of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated on February eighteen twenty twenty-four.
Discussion.
Second.
Discussion, you're none, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto authorizing advertising for the bid to purchase heavy equipment, one new front-end loader for the Sand Beach department.
Motion.
Second.
Second, is, is that budgeted already?
Yes, sir. They're within their budget.
Yeah. Any further discussion, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving claims docket as per statute, uh, Mississippi Code nineteen seventy-two and section nineteen thirteen twenty-seven. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, motion carries. Auto approving sponsorship for Oral Peak Museum of Art Black History Event, is this an advertising account of resources?
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion.
Second. Hang on a second, it needs to be a sponsored level shift.
Yeah.
There were requests of one thousand, which is the, uh, the sponsorship level very personal on, uh, print two, or drawing, page two.
Gotcha, okay.
You doing a thousand?
Yes, sir.
Motion for thousand.
One thousand, sponsorship for one thousand.
Motion.
Second.
Discussion, you're none, all in favor, signify by I. Those opposed by no, no, motion carries.
You must have to clean it today.
I'm getting ready to go.
Dr. Lattner?
Yes, sir, Pat.
Could I, could I have one thing, just in, um, thinking about the, uh, youth court thing, I'd like to work with the, uh, county administrator and maybe go out before we do any decision-making on that building, is to do a fire inspection on those buildings, because some of what we found is in the past, there was some cost to go back in and redo, um, the buildings for.
You're talking about the existing building?
The existing building that you two were talking about, a maple.
No, youth court is asking for land, eight point one acres on Seaway to build a big giant new thing. You're talking about the first people, the Justice Center?
Center for Nonviolence.
Center for.
Oh, yeah, you're talking about them, yeah.
Center for Nonviolence.
Yeah, because there was some issues with the fire.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
We've had some, I can get with the county administrator, we worked that out to go out and look at it before we make it, before we do anything.
Yeah, just so you'll know, that shelter, where it used to be the children's shelter, it was donated in the fifties, and it has to be for the use of children, and, um, it has been sitting empty for the last two years because we weren't really sending children there anymore for federal reasons and other reasons, and so it, it has been sitting dormant for two years, so that would be great. And then Building C, if you're looking at the campus on the left, kind of local building, house had just moved out of, so if you would check that one out, too, I believe those two buildings together would be ideal. And she mentioned Texas is having a center in their crime, like down to only.
One.
Only one homicide because of that, so I should have spoken up more, I truly believe that both of those buildings would be ideal for the Justice Center, and it's something that we really wanted.
And I'm sorry, but as a reminder.
Speak a little louder for them, please.
I'm sorry, as, as a reminder, when, um, with the ARCA funding, when the county designated the, um, funding to build the new ADD building, they were gonna, they're gonna tear that building down that's over on, in, um, West Gulfport and, and build back there.
For the intellectually disabled adults?
Correct, the, the new ADD building that you allocated for, and, uh, so in the interim, they were gonna move those clients to the shelter, because we could use it for that, but it is a temporary use, so I, I don't know if they'll overlap or not.
Do you know any dates yet? Because that was months ago, when the ADD said they would move.
You, you were correct, well, they started architectural drawings, they didn't wanna, they didn't wanna go, they didn't wanna move them and approve them until they needed to.
Gotcha, can you find out when that timeframe would be for that?
I will, I will work on that and get back to you. I'll send it to them.
Good reminder, forgot about that.
I'm sorry.
No, don't be, no, that's a good reminder, okay, thanks.
Thank goodness for getting that old building out of the dustmats. Might want to, might want to send, uh, buildings and grounds over to that building, or put someone in there and have issues with it, we, we need to address those prior to putting, you know, employees or whomever's gonna occupy this building.
And you're absolutely right, and they, um, the state mental health department came down and analyzed the building and went through with what would need to be done, there was some minor repair work that needed to be done, and, uh, building manager and Willie met with him, and he has the list of everything.
Do you remember how long ADD would have to stay there? It would be probably a long time because you have to build.
I'm, I'm guessing a year, but I, I don't know that, I know that Machada, Tenno's doing the.
Ten thirty appeal.
Thank you.
Mr. Eric? You want me to read it, appeal first, Eric?
You want me to read?
No, I, I.
Okay.
Ten, ten thirty appeal filed by Laura Clark of the Planning Commission, decision of fruitcake file twenty-three one, uh, one HC two oh nine for conditional use permit, filed by Evelyn Chestnut requesting a conditional use permit to allow for a manufactured home on three and a half, uh, parcel acre of land as shown on the site plan. The E one very low density residential district requires a conditional use permit for the placement of a manufactured home, budget property located at, and on Pine Crest Road, you have a law and tax parcel number is zero six, excuse me, zero six zero two K dash zero one dash zero zero one dot triple zero.
This is a case of, of, uh, Ms. Chastain requesting a conditional use to place manufactured home on the property, uh, Ms. Clark is appealing the planning commission's approval to do that. There, there is a manufactured home directly across the street from Ms. Chastain's property currently. The appeal, uh, both appellants and applicant are allowed three ten-minute speakers, all exhibits intended for the record shall be marked exhibit A, B, et cetera, the appellant will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal, uh, address any, any of the board questions, and then the board will render its decision.
All right, is it, uh, anyone, Philip would like to speak, please come forward. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Laura, Laura Clark, and, um, I filed the appeal.
And address.
On one nine two five one Pine Crest Road, Souchere, Mississippi. I filed the appeal, and the reason I filed the appeal is there were two previous, um, requests to put mobile homes on property on Pine Crest Road. The first one was, I think, in two thousand and eight, and, um, this was divided into six lots, and they were going to put mobile homes and make that rental property on Pine Crest Road.
Make it rental property?
Yes, and, um, though the previous zoning commission, um, denied it, they did tell the person that they could put a mobile home while they built a house, and to this date, a house has not been built, and so that sort of solidifies the idea that it was going to be a mobile home park, it wasn't gonna be families residing on that property. Later on, I think it was two thousand and eleven, another petition came up on another piece of property to divide, there would be three lots and a mobile home on one lot there, and the, uh, zoning at that time denied that also, and they just, you know, nothing happened to the property, they left it like it was at that time, no one's resided there. The person that appealed that wanted that already has rental property on Hickman, no, on Souchere, Lizanna Road and Souchere, so it was just logical to assume that they would probably put rental trailers on that property, too. And so what we're looking at is we feel like with the, um, approval of this one, this trailer coming into the neighborhood, there's the possibility that those people would reapply, and then we'd have nine trailers plus this one in our neighborhood. And if you looked at the pictures, I don't know if you saw the pictures, but it's houses, there is a big focus on the trailer across the road from the property that she is requesting. It has, we have lived there, my husband and I, um, for thirty years, and that trailer has been there for thirty years, ever since Katrina, it's, to my knowledge, abandoned, there is nobody living in that trailer, it's got a blue roof on it, and using that trailer as the basis to approve another trailer, it's, I don't see the connection, I mean, if it was a lived-in trailer, well-kept, that there's a family or people living there, I could understand it, but this trailer is really an eyesore, um, to the neighborhood. And, um, there is a car parked in the front yard, my understanding is the owner of the property leaves that car parked there so it'll look like somebody's living there, but to all of my research and my knowledge, nobody lives in that trailer that is across the road that seems to be the main focus of why they, when they hadn't approved this. It was a three-two decision, it was two-two, and there was the board president was sort of wavering on his decision, and then, like I said, the focus was on that trailer across the road from her property, and they said, well, there's already a trailer there, so we're gonna approve this. And so I, I just kind of questioned that, the condition of that trailer. I do want to let you know also that since this meeting, um, the owner of the two trailers that are close to that, she has listed them on Facebook Marketplace, and one of them has already sold and been moved out of the neighborhood, so the other one is still up for sale to be moved, too, and I do have pictures that that one trailer is gone, I have a, I just happened to be driving in the neighborhood the day they were pulling it out, and so I took pictures of it and the empty lot where there's no longer a trailer. I was also just wanting to point out that there was opposition, there were numerous letters sent in from people in the neighborhood, not, not wanting another trailer or a trailer added to the neighborhood, but I just didn't feel like that not consideration, I was the only one at the meeting that night representing people in my neighborhood, but it seemed like the letters didn't carry any kind of weight, and so I, I felt that they should, I felt like that that were, people were saying, you know, in their own way, that they weren't wanting that in there. Trying to think if there's anything else I wanted to point out, I'm sure you probably read my appeal letter, uh, but, you know, just at this point in time, I'd like to reconsider, I do remember at the previous meetings, that what was said was that the, in two thousand eight, two thousand and eleven, that those trailers were grandfathered in, and that they were not considered when, you know, when new people were trying to put mobile homes or trailers into the area. So, our concern really as neighbors in this neighborhood is we want to stay with the aesthetic of our neighborhood, and then also that we just don't want to open the door, because our end of the neighborhood, you have South Pine Crest, and then you have Pine Crest Road, and South Pine Crest is pretty residential, but Pine Crest, where we are at the end, there's large pieces of property that if one trailer is approved, then the likelihood that others will follow is a possibility, and so we just are not wanting this to happen in our neighborhood.
Any questions from the board, Ms. Clark?
You, you said that, that the last people that came in was in two thousand and eleven requesting, and, and you said that your fear was that this one was approved, that those people would come back and try, that, that requested that in two thousand and eleven?
There's the two thousand and eight, that was the man that had, um, the piece, it's a large piece of property that they divided into six lots, and then, then two thousand and eleven, it's another one to where it was going to be three lots, and they asked for a trailer on one of the three lots, and, um, that was not approved, either one of them. The reason that I say that I am concerned about coming back is because the people that own the large prop lot that has six lots, that was divided into six lots, they still come up there, they, they, you know, they come up there, they go hunting, they're to find.
But the purpose that they wanted to do that with the rental properties, correct?
Our understanding of talking to them, actually, I knew the people, and our talking to them and other people talking to them, they stated that they were going to put rental property, six trailers, and they would put rental property for extra income was the way it was said.
And this, that, this application that we're discussing today is a primary residence?
Right, right, but we're just, it's not, it's, if this one is approved, what is the reasoning for denying anything in the future? I mean, how, how can you deny other people in the future if this one was approved?
Well, you can, I, I'm not saying how this will go, but you can deny it based upon one of them's a primary residence and one of them, it's six parcels that people are doing for rental income, and so it's a conditional use, it's not a use by right, and so the board has the right to deny, you know, you could hypothetically put one in there and deny anything else that was going in.
My, my, um, at the night of that meeting, nothing was being denied, so I, you know, I'd have to really understand so that I could present a case so that, that we could have a, a, you know, like rental property denied, so I, I would need more information if that came up so I could plead it correctly.
Yeah, so ultimately, though, yes, yeah, so if they, if they were to, that would come, that would come before the board as well, so ultimately, the board would have the final say.
Another concern that has come up since I've talked to some of the neighbors is that once a property is, that if you approve it and uphold what they, that the board did, the zoning did, how can you guarantee that the quality of trailer that's being applied for will be what's being put in there, you know, um, because once you get approval, can you then go back and change your mind?
We can make that part of the conditional use.
Right, because, I mean, right now, they're saying it was a two hundred thousand dollar mobile home, then it changed to manufactured home, and then it's, um, at the meeting, it was said that it's gonna be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar manufactured home, so if it's approved, we want something.
We can make that part of the condition we didn't.
It's always, when it's manufactured home, we have the model number, plate number, uh, the additional thing, Ms. Chastain addressed in the meeting is she wants to put it on break foundation and that kind of stuff, so.
We, so, but we, all of that can be, we can make that part of the conditional use if, if this is approved, or if the ruling is upheld, or the appeal is denied, we can make that part of the conditional use that all those things are done, and if not, they can't.
And that was something that, you know, we've been coming back and talking, and we were saying, well, you know, if we get something like that put in place, then the future mobile homes, we maybe could push, that they would have to be that, if it happens, but, but they would have to be of that quality and that value.
I'll tell you that traditionally, since I've been on the board of supervisors, this board of supervisors has always frowned on rental, manufactured home being rented.
Right, right.
So, as Supervisor Barrett said, oh, we place conditions. So as Supervisor Barrett said, oh, we place conditions on anything that we approve. How many conditions would you permit?
There was a statement made by someone saying that we were being judgmental, and it's not judgmental about anybody that lives in a trailer or mobile home or a manufactured home. That's not it at all. We're just looking on what's best for our neighborhood, that we keep things to a certain standard, you know, and you do consider your property values and everything, so there is no objection to that, you know, this rental possibility of rental property isn't just, you know, too many in the area, and it doesn't fit the area. And like I said, it was just a concern about the approval based on that one trailer, which just isn't a standard that I felt it should be based on for approval. And I, like I said, I don't know if you saw the pictures of the two current ones that are there now. One's up the road, one's right across from the property that she wants to build on there.
Ms. Barrett has pictures.
We don't, we don't want, we don't want more of that in our area.
Yeah, we see.
Yeah, we have.
We have the pictures. Anything else?
That's all I know to say. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer.
Okay, is there anybody else that would like to speak for their appeal? Still got a few minutes. No one else for their appeal? If not, then we'll rush out of the afternoon. Those who speak for the afternoon.
Ms. Chastain, here.
Ms. Chastain? I'm sorry, I said Chasten. It's Chastain?
Chastain.
Come forward, please.
That's okay, everybody gets it wrong.
Yes, sir. I'm just wanting to put a mobile home up there, a manufactured home. My property has owned it over forty years. It did have originally two mobile homes on it when I lived there. My daughters want to put the mobile home up there and make it a permanent home. I have pictures of mobile homes that are in the area that were taken less than two weeks ago. Also have information from doctors about my health. The reason why we're wanting to put that up there is so I can eventually move in with them because of my health getting worse. And so I want to be able to sell my home, and also due to financial, it would help me out financially. So the home that they're looking at, I think you have the diagram and the outside exterior of it. It would be, the skirting and stuff would be done to look like a home. They're also wanting to put either a porch or decks on it. It's going to have fencing around the property. It's going to have landscaping. It's going to have a nice driveway put into it. It will look like a home once it's done. The price range of the trailer is anywhere from two twenty-five to two fifty. So it's, like I said, it's going to look like a home when it's there. It's not going to look like a trailer or anything. There's also a picture I have on my phone of one that is a mobile home. It's been built up, I'm sorry, I have a lot of problems, I run out of breath, that's built up, and it looks like a home, but it is a core of a trailer. Because the people that live there, their daughter used to babysit my daughter. So that trailer, that place looks like a house, but it's a trailer. And like I said, I have the pictures here. My daughter took them, and she put the addresses of the trailers that are up there, so if you want to see them.
Okay, any questions from?
I have a couple of questions. So what year is the mobile home that's going to be purchased if this appeal is?
It's two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five model. I mean, they haven't purchased it yet, so it's branded.
What is the, do you know the size of that mobile home?
It, I think you have the information from the zone.
It's twenty-two, twenty-five hundred square feet.
Yeah. It's a four-bedroom.
And you said it's going to have a brick foundation with porches and landscaping?
Yes, there, once they get it set, when, and everything's done, they want to, instead of just putting some kind of cheap siding around it, they want to brick it in to where it looks like a home.
Anybody else? Anything else?
No, sir, do you want to see the evidence that I have with the, for my medical and for the pictures and stuff?
Did you offer that, did you offer that at the commission, at the zoning commission?
No, sir, they just said I could bring it here and give it to you.
I guess we could look at it, but we can't make it a part of the record?
Yeah, but your lung is in the record.
Yeah.
Okay. Like I said, it just shows, other than what she's talking about.
I don't think that'd be necessary.
It's just, all it shows is, other than the mobile home she's talking about that's right across the road, there are other mobile homes in the area, and the one she's talking about across the road, there is people living in it because the pictures that were taken is people coming in and out of the trailer and the lights and stuff that are on. So it is occupied.
Your testimony is enough, I think. I don't think, we can't accept anything that's.
Okay, I didn't know.
It has to be part of the record. It was submitted at the commission.
Okay, and like I said, that's the medical.
She didn't have a notation of her health, of her health issues at the planning commission. So that's in the record.
Yeah, that's all in the record.
And then I just had.
She can say, tell us anything. That's, that's not, you can tell us what you're telling us, we can hear. We're hearing that. It's just you want to submit pictures and things like that. It's not part of the record.
I submitted from my orthopedist, but I just had another letter from my neurologist with some stuff on it, and I just didn't know if he wanted me to put that with it or not.
Not unless it was submitted at the commission, but you can tell us about it.
I did mention it.
Okay.
I have neuropathy really bad and vertigo and stuff, and it's just getting a lot worse into work. I fall and stumble a lot, and she just says, in my best interest, it's not good for me to live by myself, especially, you know, in the future moving forward. And also the pulmonologist stuff like that, any ologist you can think of, I probably have it, so that's just something that's going on with me. So, and that, like I said, it would be to my benefit in the near future to be able to live with them. And that's why they are getting a four-bedroom manufactured home to where I have my own section to live in. And so, like I said, right now, it's just unkept. I did not know at the time that people are dumping on it and hunting off of the property. They found chairs in the back hallway at the back of the property where people are sitting there hunting on it. Also, they found tires and trash that are being dumped on it. So I did not know that until they went up there and actually walked it, looking at it to where, you know, they would put a home. And it runs six seventy-seven deep, so it would be set way back off the road. You won't see it because we're not clearing the whole property. So when you turn, Ms. Clark lives all the way to the other end. I live on a dead-end road. My property would be halfway down where the driveway would be of that road. So when you turn in, and they're setting it back, you wouldn't even see it when you turn to go to her property. So it's not going to, you know, be where anybody can just look at it from the road and see it. You don't drive down the road to look at it.
Okay.
And like I said, it's primary, it's not rental property.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you hearing me.
All right. Do your fellows have five-minute rebuttal? No, also, is that a rebuttal?
I just wanted to clarify, like you said, that it would be put in the, what the requirements, the type of trailers.
Yeah, be a part of the conditional use.
Twenty-twenty-four, that large, with the landscaping and the bricking, so that would all be part of what, what has to be put on that piece of property. It can't be, you know, downgraded when you get in there and say, oh, this is something we can't do at this time, or, do you understand what I'm saying? So that'll all be in the, in the requirements.
Be in the condition.
For it to be approved. Thank you.
That's my, just a note, Eric, I presume that when they put the manufactured home on that property, they have to have a C.O.
Yes, yes.
Just a note, if those conditions are not met, that C.O. will not be issued.
They don't get, they don't, if, if it's a different model than what was approved by the planning commission, they have to start over. You can't, I mean, we, we get all the information for the truck, for the manufactured home that they're going to be placing on the property, and it's tied to that model, though.
Right, I just want, I just want people to understand that when we set conditions, those conditions are enforceable, of the fact that you won't get a C.O., electricity won't be hooked up to that facility, and you can't live there. So those conditions have to be met.
So conditional use, just so I'm very familiar with policy, but a conditional use can be taken away as well if they follow the guidelines. So if, just for instance, if they move the mobile home there, everything's done the way it's supposed to, and a year from now, they start renting it out, well, they don't have a conditional use for that. We can remove that because this is not a zoning change, this is a conditional use. And I'd like to make a motion to deny the appeal with the conditions of the mobile home being a two thousand twenty-four or newer, brick foundation, porches, landscaping, and no rental. That's, okay?
Perfect. There's a motion and a second, third, any further discussion? Here and on, all in favor, signify by aye. No vote by no, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, that's a good outcome. I appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am. Eric, I think we have another one.
One more?
We just.
I'll try not to get multiples again.
All right, ten forty-five appeal filed by Brian Smith, the planning commission of the city of Guy, filed two-three-one-two-H-C-two-two-three for a zoning map amendment and conditional use permit filed by Brian Smith requesting approval to change the zoning district classification of five-point-four-four acre parcel of land property that's currently zoned as Z-one, very low density. Request is to change zoning district classification to C-two, which is general commercial, to allow for boat construction, service and repair, wet or dry business as shown on site plan, operation, boat construction, service and repair, wet or dry businesses in the C-two district requires a conditional use permit from the planning commission. Subject property is located at two-eight-two-four-zero-four-nine Rose Boulevard, at the Adelton tax parcel number zero-four-zero-seventy-dash-zero-one-dash-zero-one-six dot zero-zero-zero, by boat in District Three.
We had complaints probably six, eight months ago of somebody running a boat repair, parts sale business from that address, went out and inspected it. The neighbors, well, the complainant also steered us to a website and a Facebook page where he was selling boat parts from the, from the property. He had, when I went out there, in excess of twenty boats on the property, the neighbor, it's in a, it's at the dead end of residential neighborhood. What Mr. Smith attempted to do was to get, get the zoning change to a C-two so that he could, he could operate that business. There's nowhere the C-two zoning in the neighborhood within a couple miles, and he was denied by the planning commission.
And the conditional use permit would be moved if we don't approve the zoning change?
Correct.
The appellate, Mr. Smith, Thompson, here?
Both appellate and applicant are allowed three ten-minute speakers. All exhibits intended for the record shall be marked A.B., A.B., etc. The appellate will be allowed a five-minute rebuttal, address any board questions, and then render its appeal.
Mr. Brian Smith, here?
Yes, sir. I mainly do online sales. I don't have a storefront. I'm at the dead-end road.
Let's give you your address.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Brian Smith, two-four-zero-four-nine Rose Boulevard, Gulfport, three-nine-five-zero-two. I mean, three, I think. But most of my stuff is, you know, all online. I did buy influx of boats. I mean, I didn't plan on selling boats, but I sell motors mainly. I don't build boats there. I don't do paint or fiberglass there. I've been doing this on the coast for over twenty years.
At that location?
No, I've been on this location for a little over eight years now. All the other neighbors, there's never been a problem with anybody, you know? The one in complaint right now, there never was a problem with her until, you know, somebody gets sideways or don't like something, and they complain, but everybody else in the neighborhood is fine with it. I keep being good with my neighbors. I keep a fence. I keep a clean place. And albeit what had been said at the planning commission, I do, I do store any materials in containers approved. I do not make my creeks or water, I do not pollute. I mean, I'm not one of those type of people. And this has cost me a substantial amount of money with this one complaint out of seven or eight people on this property, I mean, this whole area. I'm on a dead-end road. I actually own another piece of property adjoining to me, so that means that I actually have over ten acres. But this one in particular property we're talking about is five, and I've only cleared about two acres of it. And last year, I bought influx of insurance boats from the hurricane that it was just, you buy them all or you don't get them. So I bought them to either part them out, take the motors out, because I mainly sell motors and drives. I don't, I don't, I'm not there to sell boats, but inherently, some of the boats I bought were, you know, I couldn't part them out because they were nice boats. But we're talking about high-end boats, and I'm talking about junk boats. We're talking about boats, you know, thirty, forty, eighty-thousand-dollar boats. So the boats, the influx of boats I had, it takes me time because I'm one person, to go through the boats, clean them, figure out what I want to do with them, and then the boats that are being parted out, I haul them off to the dump. So I'm in the process of cleaning it up, but there's nothing about my property that's not clean. I'm quiet, I don't bother anybody, and if anybody says I do, they're just lying about me. That's all they're doing. I mean, that's all this is about. That's all I have to say.
Okay, how about those, those two appeals?
No, I'm going to let Patty speak. I'm making up my throat. I've just had throat surgery.
Patricia Harrison, one-four-zero-seven-two, Big Creek Road, Gulfport, Mississippi, three-nine-five-zero-three.
And you're speaking for?
I'm speaking for Lila Paul, but we also live in the neighborhood directly across the street on Rose Boulevard. Our major concern is that the size and scope of this property has, of this business has grown over the years. When it first started, it was two or three small boats. Now it's twenty to thirty large commercial vessels, some twenty to thirty feet in length, as well as numerous recreational vehicles, a repurposed fire truck, all of which are densely packed into the yard, parked at the end of the street, and some across the street in the neighbor's yard. Although there's a wooden privacy fence, the boats are large enough to be clearly seen above the fence, it can actually be seen from Big Creek Road. It appears to be a boat salvage, boat RV salvage yard. We're also concerned if he has purchased this additional property, that that will, the business will be expanded onto the additional acreage. The boats are parked very densely on the property and constitute a significant fire and environmental hazard. Many of the boats are inoperable and stored on trailers. The boats contain significant amounts of fuel and other hazardous waste, which if ignited, the whole end of the street would go up. The neighbors were concerned about whether or not the hazardous waste will be disposed of properly. This property was previously designated wetlands. There's standing water on it all the time. When I asked at the planning board, they told me that no environmental study had been done. It wasn't required because he had never had the proper business license, and so therefore, if he had the business, proper business license, the environmental study would be required, but they had never done one. The repair operation is located at the end of a very small rural dead-end road, which is already in a state of disrepair. The boats are transported by very large, heavy trucks, which damage the road and present a hazard to elderly pedestrians walking down the road. Additionally, the transport trucks, many with jake brakes, arrive all hours of day and night and create a noise nuisance. They wake the neighbors if they arrive in the middle of the night, but they're allowed to park and sleep in their trucks. At the planning board meeting, one board member said they had issued a cease and desist order, but it was never enforced at the. but it was never enforced, and the business, the boats had come and gone unabated, including two boats that arrived this weekend. Um, there had been threats and intimidation to the neighbors. Um, one neighbor was told they needed to learn to conform and accept the business operations. Um, after being denied the zoning change at the port board meeting, one of Mr. Smith's witnesses threatened Ms. Lila Paul on, or her, Lila Paul on her way out the door, and said, "Next time I see your husband, I'm going to F. with him." Only she didn't say F. Uh, Mr. Brad Paul is seventy-five years old, and Lila or him does not need to be threatened. We had to get a police escort to get our car. And that's pretty much what we have to say. And there are many neighbors in the neighborhood that oppose this business, not just one. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions?
No.
All right.
Thank you.
All right, it's got a five-minute, uh, rebuttal.
I'd like to say for the record that nobody's put their hand on a Bible, I swear to the truth, about anything they've said here. And I have never been lied about more in my life than I have by these two women right here. I've got over seven neighbors. I've got written statements on this file, that they're all on my side. The lady that's talking right there, she lives on the other side of Wolf River Road on the dead end with all her equipment and all her stuff burning and everything she's doing. I don't care what she does, that's her property. She's on the dead end. I'm not out to get her, I'm not out to destroy her. I'm on the whole opposite side. We're talking about, no, she's nowhere, she's not even a neighbor. All right? And Lila lives on the, on, she don't live on Rose Boulevard, she lives on Big Creek Road. So all of my neighbors that live exactly down me, I mean, everything she's saying is a lie. And I'm not gonna sit here and try to defend my business with some, one person can come up and destroy something I've worked for all my life down here. You know, I don't know what else to say. Thank you.
Well, what the board, what the board, what the board is, the fact is, I guess the board will have to decide, is that if, if it is a business, it is operating in a, uh, E-one violation. E-one, uh, so.
It's licensed by the state.
All that, really, you know, the fact is, if, if it's a business, he's operating in a.
Residential.
A residential home.
But there's businesses all around.
All right, now, we, we, that, that's an issue that they would have to take up. That's, with, with this particular decision, it's just this one. There are other businesses in that area operating, and we would have to deal with that as well. Okay, uh. The chair will entertain a motion.
So just, um, um, the plant, the zoning commission voted to deny, deny the zoning change because it was a commercial zone in a residential neighborhood. It would, it would technically be spot, spot zone, yeah.
Yeah.
I would make a motion to uphold the planning commission's denial.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion among the board? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Thank you. All right. Chair, you got anything?
Mr. Barr? Um. Steve is here today. Do you wanna talk to Steve Pepper? Want to discuss anything?
I don't think he's here now, he left.
He left.
Yeah.
He said that he needs to head out.
We.
Okay. All right, just making sure.
Yeah.
I'm gonna send y'all an, an email, and I just need three of y'all to answer me. But basically, some changes that, that the county needs to, some questions and some changes that I see in the county that we need to address. Um, I don't think you need to, I don't think it needs to be in the board, I think it can be addressed simply over any minute. So I'm gonna send y'all that this week, and we'll get it. Other than that, that's it.
Well, that, that, Nathan and I were talking, I hadn't had the chance to talk. The, the interviews for the county administrator, is there any way to break that up? That's a long haul.
Yeah. I mean, we've already notified, but I'm sure we've called.
That's the only problem, is you notified.
And I only blocked out Thursday.
Did you still act there?
You only blocked out Thursday.
I only blocked out Thursday, because that's what we decided.
We'll just bite the bullet and go with it. Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, it's just a long haul, with that many of them.
Was it from nine to?
Four.
Four?
Nine to four. No problem.
I'll get y'all some doughnuts or something.
You're about to, you're about to do doughnuts. Come around here with that, it's gonna cost you more. At least, at least a good house, now we're dealing with no doughnuts.
I think you got one screw.
But, uh, anything else?
That was it.
Hey.
I, I have nothing.
I don't have anything either, though. But, uh, I, I will say this, and I don't think it's to do it here now, but I do think we need to look at some of our policies in reference to how we, uh, assign, uh, comp time as, uh, as opposed to, uh, overtime. So that's something we'll get.
Yes, sir.
We need to look at that. You got, you, you.
I agree.
Okay, so we'll, we'll bring that up and discuss that at some other time, but that needs to be dealt with. We'll get with you on that.
Am I next?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I wanted to replace my tourism commissioner. I'm sure you all remember the history, and, um, we need someone who actually has a tourism background. And so I wanted to replace, um, Ann Stewart with, uh, Jovi Braxton. Jovi was vice president of marketing for several casinos for many years. And now look a real turn, I just wanted y'all to support him that, so I'll make a motion to replace my tourism commissioner, please.
Do I hear a second? A second. Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries.
That's all.
Please, Ms. Riker. Ms. Chastain?
I do not, thank you.
Did she got anything?
Um, I think I did, I didn't, but, um, could we possibly entertain a motion to reword that, that last motion to remove? Do a motion to remove.
Instead of replace?
Ms. Stewart, and then vote on that, and then separately.
Two separate motions.
Okay. Uh, because that conforms to the statute. Sure.
Just, just for a little explanation, I don't, I don't know if Nathan and Ann is aware of this, but the tourism law, the, the local and private that creates a regional tourism board is one of the few boards that the board of supervisors are allowed to remove at, at will. Their terms are not set in law. The board of supervisors can, can remove any appointee on that commission. So it's, that's why she had, that's why we're saying remove as opposed to an ending of term.
And the appointment of Ms. Braxton would be for the remainder of that.
So let, let the record, let's vote on first the removal.
Okay.
Let, let's say that was your first motion.
Okay.
Okay? And that's been approved? Or do we need to vote again?
No, need to vote again. Motion is second.
Hearing, hearing the, uh, motion, uh, do I hear a second? So, any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, the motion carries. Now your point, Mr.?
Uh, now I'd like to appoint Jovi Braxton to the tourism commission of District.
Hearing the motion, do I hear a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by no, motion carries. Is that the only thing you have?
Yes, sir.
All right. And if no, no more business before the board, the chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Discussion, all in favor, signify by aye. Those opposed by no, motion carries.
Everybody next meeting's gonna have a quick question.
Okay, everybody next meeting's gonna have a quick question.